All right, we'll now call the city council. Budget hearing is ordered, regular meeting for September thirteenth, six P M. We provide the invitation and pledge the. I'll thank for allowing us to be here for that. We just ask you to be with those that are still being fight COVID. We're willing you guys to be with those families on the Boston one or be something called the. We just ask you to be there to encourage people. And so we can call that and let the devil see the correct future of that. Which day may be darker time for this assassination. People in person, people who's good people. So we just ask them, we'll come to this meeting tonight. So if here from them look, they will lead us in guidance, pardon, and consider that we make product. And you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Let me see. If we could get a roll call, please.
Member Gray.
Here.
Member Johnson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Here.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
But the record reflect that member Southernland is absent for tonight's meeting.
Right. First up, under citizens and outside agencies, we have item number four, the interlocal agreement for LE services. We do have Sheriff Paul Blackman with us tonight. City manager, do you want to preface this item?
Sure. After, um, this was on the last agenda, the reference to budget. There was talk about adding a possible third year for actually the sheriffs. And the second term, there was no decision made. Um, I've added the third year for your consideration for it so that we've got the numbers that we. You choose to move forward with that, we know what, um, the next three years entail and. Good.
Mr. Blackman, as we left it last time, I believe there was some questions asked and there was some information that. We're gonna be bringing forward. Would you like to start with that or would you like to start with questions from the.
The record, Sheriff Paul Blackman. Uh, I did bring some additional numbers to add to. This is from 2007, eighteen, nineteen, two thousand twenty, remain the same. There are calls for service work down a little bit all over the county, calling due to. Being home, not at work. Uh, but still remain the same, still about twenty-five percent. Calls for service for what we call alpha two and alpha three. Uh, so those trends are still staying the same, uh, and justifying what I asked was.
All right. Questions for here?
I have no questions, but you have comments. For sure, wasn't here at the last meeting. Kind of hard to hear with our sound system. But I know that we've gone over this, uh. Before, but there was a. Think that, uh.
Did we turn that sound system up?
Go ahead, David. And, uh. Both times I've been with Sheriff Blackman. Both times he said it would be fair. I actually met with him once at his office. To talk about fairness, that he was talking about, uh, since I wasn't able to negotiate, possibly even, um. Talked about maybe extending the negotiations to bring in officers over a four-year term. I even suggest a possible maybe either one, two a year. And, uh, it didn't really vary negatively on it other than by this fine person that comments. Only comment that I have about fairness is that. We have a approximately twenty officers assigned at Avon Park. Ten of those are definitely sheriffs that. That are patrol, I believe, assigned. Comes out to, uh, a firm contract somewhere around seventy-five thousand dollars per unit. With a vehicle and, uh. At the increase that you're asking for this year, seven hundred thousand dollars. Seven hundred thousand dollars, increasing to four different vehicles, four different officers. That comes out to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per unit. I think that's a little excessive. Think that that is being fair. As far as the vehicle increase. We, uh, had been paying for the last nine years. For that, I believe, Sheriff Blackman will pay thirty thousand dollars a year. Uh, I understand that that's possibly a little bit low. I don't really have a problem with, uh, this increase. Uh, it's likely increase the cost of vehicles, but, uh. They're gonna go from thirty thousand dollars a year for a distant vehicle the next year at a cost of. Over two hundred thousand dollars. That is, uh, another exceptional type increase. Then once again, I do not think this fair. And, uh. The other item is, the only thing that we did increase. Was the rental of our building. That we have responsibility of getting more of the building. Sheriff did not agree to pay any more of the debt and still wants to pay ten dollars a year to use our building. So as of now, we paid less than a hundred dollars for using our building for the last nine years. I don't think that's quite fair. Let me say this. Before, I'll say it again, that I respect and support every member. Men and women of our sheriff's department, including Sheriff Paul Blackman. I personally would love to be able to, uh. Have them continue with the service here. But I go back to his statement saying what is fair. I'm sure he can come up with numbers that prove his point. And, uh, that's why I don't really have a question for him because I wouldn't be surprised, but. I just think that. We're adding four different officers units this year. That's a forty percent increase, forty percent. The tentatronics we have now, and over two years, he wants to increase to eight units, which is an eighty percent increase. I'm not going to sit here and argue whether we need four this year or four next year. I, 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 my argument would be, let's, let's see if we can go with four this year and see how that goes. Uh, and I also think we definitely did negotiate. Because basically there were no more negotiations. Basically, whatever the sheriff asked for, the city manager agreed to tell me. From his point of view, that it was fair. And the only thing he was proud of was the fact that he got to phase into the eight, eighty percent increase over two years. Our cost is seven hundred and six thousand dollars. So we are basically going to be paying. One point three million dollars more next year, over the next two years. And then every year after that. I just think it's excessive. I don't think it's fair. Wish he would, uh, negotiate something that, uh, would be more reasonable to the taxpayers. I would like to see the department stay in service. Because I've met many of the officers. I was invited to go to the citizens academy, which I think, uh, is the proud thing for the sheriff to do that. And I was probably on that policy, that program. I also enjoy the app that he has where he gives out notices on a daily basis, whether there's an accident or a runaway. Or even a weather condition and many times, uh, that has caused me to drive a quickness directly to where I was going. So I'm proud of our sheriff's department. I'm proud of the fact that they serve here, but I just think that there's. Move for negotiations to make it more fair instead of going from seventy-five thousand dollars a unit for pay now to. A hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. That's all I have to say.
All righty, Sheriff, is there an opportunity to respond or hear more questions?
Well, I think my responsibility is generating a lot of questions.
Any further questions for Sheriff? Do you think, audience?
I have a question, would you like to renegotiate or?
Yes. We do have one sign up, Mr. Tom Macklem. Tom, you know the drill.
I do. My name is Tom Macklem, I live at six oh nine County Road sixty-four east here at Avon Park. Um, it's hard to believe, almost, that it's been nine years. It is nine years, so we're now, it's a decision that's made to. On the city council, Avon Park, to fund their police department and go outside for services through the sheriff's department. And there's one remaining member of the council, Ms. Gray, and I appreciate your service all these years. She was a member of that council at the time. And you will remember and others, that I was adamantly opposed to this move at that time. I believed then, and I still believe today, that there are certain things that make a city a city. Police, fire, yard, sort of, those are the types of things people move to count for. That having been said, um. Everyone knew once this step was taken, that there was going to be no going back, that it would have been physically impossible to reconstitute. The agency at that one time. For a person. Um, every individual that I've had the opportunity to interact with. That works for Hamilton County Sheriff's Office has been top shelf. I cannot say that I've ever had a negative, uh, interaction with any single individual. I haven't always been happy with results. I've had the opportunity and that's not always the problem, the fault of, you know, the law enforcement officers. Situation is not when they get there, what are they gonna do? Like, it's just the way that it is. I'm hopeful. Uh, while I do share Mr. Bernard's concerns about price, and everybody knew at some point in time that the value that we were getting early on was going to. Not be the same, that costs were going to go up and provide new vehicles today and see how much more you pay today than you did just a few years ago. It's very difficult to work that same deal. But to that end, I'm, I'm very hopeful that the increase in coverage, um, my, my expectations are that the increase in coverage that we're going to have here in Avon Park. We're going to get the value for the money. Because there's a lot of stuff that just goes on and on and on. You all, most of you all know where I live, up here on County Road sixty-four east. That. I live in a fairly high-traffic area. Speed limit there is thirty-five when there's obstruction. Um, we have, about twenty years ago, uh. Then citizen George Hall, then a councilperson after, and now not before, came to us, and I was a member of the serving with. With Brenda, asking about, uh, making it legal to run golf carts in the city of Avon Park. Brenda may remember, and, and that felt like it led to live, they did not know any word. But we've got golf carts all over this place. We've got them running up, make the sidewalks on Bain Street pulling trailers. So I'm hopeful that along with ETVs and BODs and dirt bikes and so on and so forth, that seem to just run willy-nilly. That we'll be able to get a better handle on that with these covers. So that's my hope. They're all fine individuals. I didn't want to see ours go away, but this is what we have. Looking forward to a relationship that will continue to get better and better over time and. Hopefully, it's been discussed, as I look down here at our control, which I'm going to speak to later, which is a, a local ordinance. That negotiations have included the ability or the willingness of the sheriff's office to enforce local ordinances. For the city, not just court statutes and so on and so forth. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Macklem. Sheriff, uh, before you step up there, is there anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak on this issue? Sheriff, do you care to address the city ordinance issue in front of?
Uh, yes, Mr. Macklem, just, just so you may know, we improved the contract, but we did put that in there to, uh, to work. And when they're not out, that the, uh, that is their.
I'd like to hear things for your panelists. Are there any further questions?
May I make this statement?
Sure.
Um, I would just like to say, I have been up here, been up here for twenty-one years. In, um, our last police department, and I did not want to disband them, but they were the ones. Somebody's there. And the sheriff department, we made the agreement nine years ago, and I was part of that decision. I knew it would be going up because everything goes up with time. Um, I do believe that the sheriff's department has provided us, um, very good service. Sheriff's department will be tagged and passed, and I'm very pleased with the sheriff's department. However, with saying that, in everything goes up, everything increased. I never thought that I would be in an area, as Mr. Michael said, that we talked about the, um, golf carts. And we, we were told, hey, look, you can't, you can't regulate it because this is not a golf community. It had to be on a golf, a golf course, but, uh.
Actually, that's not, that's not.
I said, that's what we were told. I didn't say it was true or not.
Okay, what by me?
I don't know who it was by. But, but, but we could not regulate it, okay?
In fact, you can't, uh, they're not allowed at all unless you have an ordinance, a law.
All right, maybe that's where you wouldn't even have an ordinance at that time. But however, um, I don't know if we have an ordinance now, to be honest with you. But I see the golf carts everywhere and, um, the dirt bikes and the two builders and everything else everywhere. But saying that, um, I am going to agree to this, um, contract because we need the service. Avon Park needs this service. We cannot, we don't have the funds to, and I, our own police department. And, and to be honest with you, I don't think I want to do it anyway. So with saying that. Thank you, Sheriff Blackman, you too.
Thanks, Sheriff. Thank you, good night, sir.
Thanks, Sheriff, appreciate everything you guys do. We especially appreciate the, all the backend functions that you guys perform, sometimes go on notice. Detective work in crime lab, set swap teams, so on and so forth, so appreciate everything you guys. Any other questions or comments of council? If not, uh.
I'm here.
Yes.
I know that I can't afford anything dealing with sheriff's department, but I, I must agree with Councilwoman Gray. For mayor. We share a roof, you, you guys gotta get control of, of what's going on because, like Ms. Gray says, it's in her areas and the mayor's area. But I tell you, they're running through our yards. And they're going, wow, and every unlicensed vehicle you could think of. As a matter of fact, I had a young man run through my yard. Broke everything in my yard, the bike broke down, and we had to call the sheriff's department to get him to get out of the yard. He left the bike in rain. And my husband refused to let him get the bike, but to the sheriff's department showed up. So again, I definitely appreciate what you do, and I just want to see us do more because these four-wheelers and these dirt bikes and these kids, and they're. They're literally little kids riding some of these things. We gotta get a handle on it. But naturally, you know, we need law enforcement, and I do appreciate everything that you guys do. I'm gonna stop it right there. Okay, thank you.
All right, the only change is the addition of a third year, so if, remember, if you're making a motion that you'd be there to include or exclude that, um, it says it's an option.
I hope that we approve the interlocal agreement of law enforcement services between the counties, county sheriff's department, and the city of Avon Park, truly through the third year added to the unit.
Is there a second? Second that motion, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll. Member Gray.
Yes.
Member Johnson.
Unless we're supposed to say that, I'll sign off on that.
All right, Deputy Mayor Bernard.
No.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Thank you. Item number five, what discussion? Be for.
Emily, can I just summarize the golf cart issues? We have, it's a perfect issue. Just to summarize, I'm going to walk through it, but. Statutes order with regard to, to golf carts, and you can't have golf carts run right in the city. Just, you know, everywhere, without having an ordinance that allows it. There's very little, I just believe, which you remember, very little you can do in that ordinance. It's outside the statute, the statute provides the basis for what you can do. The board that they had a couple of years ago, legislature was wanting to add to, um, drivers that are under sixteen. Those safety features, things like that. But obviously, you know, very little you can do, it's not included in the statute, and the statute doesn't include a lot. So that's.
Do we have a board this name?
Yeah.
Do we have a board this name?
No, you're not. I, I did propose one based on your, your request, city request, and I would like to pass. As I recall, as I recall.
Obviously, uh, four-wheelers, dirt bikes, and motorized scooters that are not tagged, but also.
We'll say, yes, yeah, I think that's, um, anything that's not street legal, you have to ask. Look, that's definitely the statute that allows it, the ordinance. Now, the, um, micro-mobility that we have to talk about later is one of those things that, you know, generally was not allowed before, but now it's allowed because of the micro. But.
No, I was gonna thanks, ask the question when you finish.
Okay, ready?
So with the motion that, that justice made, and there was two yes, one abstain and one no, so who was y'all?
Yeah, it was two, two yeses and one no.
Two yeses and one no, so the yes said.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Warren's majority.
All right, item number five, what discussion? Melody, take your words.
We think, this evening, we have.
What, to get you to sing it louder again?
Maybe that's it, this evening, we have. Um, changes that were made to the budget based on. We'll see here, this evening. I put up on the bottom of the list a budget summary for you all. So the changes that were made to the budget were. A request was put in for the wastewater treatment plant operator position. That council approved, but it was never added to the budget. We are requesting a part-time position, the admin services clerk, be considered a full-time position. And the last change was the increase in the health insurance premiums. So if you look at the budget changes. The budget changes, or the budget summary that I hand about to you, at the very bottom, you'll see. Two lines, one says increase/decrease from nine, seven meeting, so that's the amount of the change. And then the bottom line will show you the totals coming out will be added to those others. Okay? And then so, the next, we will do that slide mark. David? Actually, I think it's a couple.
It's a next one.
No, you're welcome. Okay, so in the general bond, the, the total increase is forty-seven thousand five dollars, and that's. Reflects the increase in the health insurance premium, and the administrative services clerk is allocated thirty-three percent to that department. The wastewater. Fund, um, is an increase of one hundred and sixteen thousand two hundred dollars. And that reflects an increase in the housing insurance premium, thirty-three percent of the administrative services clerk and the operator position. Sanitation fund is an increase of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred and ten dollars, and that is health insurance premium increase and thirty-four percent of the administrative services clerk. Another change that does not reflect anything for, uh, sorry, you're in the work in, but in the infrastructure or the five-year capital improvement plan. The police department, we updated the vehicle amount, uh, for the second year of the contract. Vehicles were increased fourteen thousand three hundred and seventy, but law enforcement services, it's decreased by the same amount. That was due to an error by. Staff at Sheriff's Office. And the last change that was made was. Councilmember Southern had suggested that we add. In the Parks and Rec Department, add grants that go out as far as our C I N plan, just in case one percent, so I've added those to the.
Mayor, can I cover the, um, the part-time to the full-time, please? Something we guys could bring up last time. Since I've got here, we need a purchasing agent, really, but. With, um, budget going up this year, I wasn't gonna ask for one, however, we have a solution. We have a part-time, um, administrative clerk that worked upstairs, for those who know Linda was here. Wanted to replace Linda. Well, when things get tough, we didn't have a finance director or managing one in this case. I brought Andy Mogul up here, and for the past year and a half, I've been kind of working with Andy on getting quotes and. You know, with a sole source of that, become very good at it, I think you make an excellent purchasing agent, so not to cost anything other than the other half of a part-time. Um, administrative clerk, and if you approve making that person part, or full-time, I'm gonna put them out at public works to do the clerk work out there and. And leave Andy up here and make him into a purchasing agent, which would be great, we need.
The part-time, full-time changes are in the budget currently?
Yes.
To include the, um, the added tickets to picos and all that other stuff, and all the, the, the full-time penetrates as well.
Yes, ma'am.
That's it.
Yes, ma'am.
Questions on the budget? Anyone in the audience? The only question I had was the, on the ROI, uh, this budget does apparently reflect that new ROI that we're, we're likely gonna go to.
It does.
It does, okay. Very good.
So if you look at your, excuse me, the budget summary. On the general bond, if you look at transfers in, right underneath total sources.
Yes.
It's actually one point two million for the, um, return on investment and sixteen thousand from.
Got it. Yeah. All right. No further questions, anyone willing to make a motion?
I hope that we approve of twenty-one.
There's no need to make a, um, motion on that.
Last time, okay.
Item number six, this will be a public hearing for resolution twenty-two one dot oh eight, to be with intended members.
A, a resolution, City of Avon Park, the Council, County Board, and intended letting, add border taxes for. A resolution, the city of Bayonne Park, the county of Florida, intended letting the adware taxes provided for fiscal year two thousand point one, two thousand point two. Just so we say that we probably need to change how it's counting to.
Okay.
So, it says, we will now be levying of adware taxes for the city of Bayonne Park this year.
All right, so basically, this takes us from a point nine eight nine eight mils to a two point two four mils, which the budget was based off of. Are there any comments from staff?
Excuse me, we need to read the whole resolution and record, please.
So, going along, whereas the city of Bayonne Park and Bayonne County for September fourteen, two thousand twenty-one, adopting this year, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand point two, ten to four trade, following the public hearing required by the statute two hundred point oh six five. Whereas the city of Bayonne Park, the county of Bayonne County, public hearing as required by the statute two hundred point oh six five, and whereas the gross taxable value for operating purposes, non-existent taxation, we then have this kind of certified by the property appraiser to the city of Bayonne Park, adds three hundred and thirty-three thousand seven hundred and forty, three hundred and thirty-four million seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand four hundred and twelve. Now, therefore, we have resolved by the city of Bayonne Park, the county of Bayonne County for that. For fiscal year two thousand twenty-one to two thousand point two, ten to operate, no, just two point two four mils, which is greater than the rollback rate of point nine eight nine eight mils by one hundred and twenty-six point three one percent. This resolution will take that effect immediately once the adoption, we adopt the public hearing fifteen day of September two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, now, is there any comments from staff? This is a public hearing, public hearing for resolution twenty-two-one dash oh eight, it's now open. Anyone wish to speak can now do so. See, seeing no hands, we will close the public hearing, take it back to the council. Anyone willing to make a motion?
I hope that we approve the recommended resolution twenty, resolution twenty-one oh eight, ten to four trade, as presented in item sixteen.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll. Member Gray.
Yes.
Member Johnson.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion pass.
I do have a question for Melody, if you don't mind, go ahead. But with this million rate, you had everything you did, what's the total amount of money we're taking out of reserves this year?
For general bond, it's three hundred and fifty thousand nine hundred and ten.
Okay, and so, if according to the agreement with the sheriff department, where we increase at six hundred thousand dollars next year, if everything stays the same, we're going to have to raise taxes, take more money out of the.
Correct.
Any other questions? Seeing none, out of number seven, we have a public hearing for resolution twenty-two-one dash oh nine, intended by.
Are we just as full as well?
No, no, sir.
Okay, short panel, let me take what's issued by the city of Bayonne Park, the county of Bayonne County, for the top ten of the two thousand twenty-one to two thousand point two.
Okay, comments from staff? Which we've been discussing, as I said, this is a public hearing, public hearing for resolution twenty-two-one dash oh nine is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on the budget cannot do so. Seeing no takers, public hearing for resolution point twenty-one dash oh nine now closed. Any motions?
I hope that we approve the resolution.
So, we had seen all this, you made the motion, she seconded it.
Good.
I'm so long, I mean, I can't hear that, which I'm saying. You were talking.
Yes.
I'm so sorry.
It's okay, it's okay.
All right, we have a motion in a second, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll. Member Gray.
Yes.
Member Johnson.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion pass. Thank you, out of number eight will be the, the group mention of consent agendas before August twenty-third, twenty-one, council regular meeting. And August twenty-third, twenty-one, council special meeting. Do we have a motion?
Okay. Okay.
Ladies first.
Go ahead.
We approve of the minutes for August twenty-third, twenty-one, council regular meeting and August twenty-third, twenty-one, council special meetings.
You don't mind, I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll. Member Gray.
Yes.
Member Johnson.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion pass. All right, out of number nine, we have the selection of the canvassing board, Mark.
Supervisor, election guy with us, would like you to appoint the canvassing board.
Okay, so your charter says that such a canvassing board, that should not have less than three, more than five members. And it's, shall we propose that council members not running for office that election? And another person, sort of election cycle, so if you have three that are not running for office, then it's easy, it's an easy thing. If you have less than three, then you need to select from the. Some, somebody else to pick up.
I think in prior years, typically, we select a couple of council members and one staff member. In this case, we actually have five council members that are eligible, because no one is running for office this year. No, the options are wide open, so if there are any suggestions from the council as to who the three will be, we can have all three council members, we can have two council members and staff. Keep going.
I think that Miss Gray, from twenty-one years' experience, is a good opportunity to learn. Mr. Shirley Johnson, who basically volunteered, takes a position the last eight months, will be another great one. And I think that we can also make this to be my first.
Okay, are all three of those parties willing?
I'll take one for two.
Shirley? Are you willing? Shirley?
We're not willing, am I?
Willing, any? There's, there's other options, you can do it.
Can I pass on this?
Sure. Jim, do you have amended person?
I think Jim should do it.
If I'm just glad you say yes, I'll say.
I say yes.
I say yes.
No, I'm saying yes.
How's that?
All right, so we've got three there. We need a motion for that, that was your motion, Jim, correct?
Eventually, yes.
See, that is so good.
So good.
All right, is there a second to that?
Second.
We have, yes, and you're not finding to a benefit. We have a motion in a second, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call.
Do we have to be there to file the vote count?
That's a yes. We have a motion in a second, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll. Member Gray.
Yes.
Member Johnson.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion pass. Out of number ten, resolution twenty-ten dash ten, for return on investments.
Resolution, city council of Bayonne Park, forward to approve policy of recognizing training and budgeting for return on the city's capital investment in utility infrastructure providing.
Melody?
Okay, so, this has been a discussion since the last couple of months. We had passed a resolution back in November of two thousand eleven regarding the return on investment. The value on our wastewater and water system, as represented. And then, we have received a, an updated estimate from Florida Rural Water Association on September eighth, twenty twenty. And they indicate that the value of our system is thirty-three million seventy-six thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars. Our deputy guy, John Davis, has admitted that the updated value should be used to calculate the return on investment.
Any questions? Anyone willing to make a motion?
Second.
See, we have a motion in a second, any further questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll call a roll. Member Gray.
Yes.
Member Johnson.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion pass. Out of number eleven, the discussion on American Rescue Plan Funds, Melody will give you.
Okay, so, we have a handout with the price on the bias, the American Rescue Plan Fund summary. The city was awarded on March eleventh, twenty twenty-one, three million six hundred and seventy-seven dollars, seventy-seven, forty dollars. We received our first distribution on July third, twenty twenty-one, and we don't have one million eight thirty-eight five twenty. Twenty, July twenty-third. Twenty twenty-one. Eligible uses of the funds, there's four major categories, and they're the A, B, C, and D. So, you have public and economic, public health and economic impacts. Provide, pre-meeting pay for essential workers, revenue loss in investments and infrastructure. The infrastructure, water, and sewer structure, the bonds are actually eligible expenses for that area, for that. Eligible use comes from the, directly from the clean water, state revolving fund grants and the drinking water, state revolving fund grants. So, there was a little bit of research to do in there, there's several things that we could do. But I think it's important that, you know, you all take time to look at these and decide what's, what's most important to do. So, that summary shows just the major points. If you look at the second, the stable printout, it gives you a little bit more information on each one of those. And if you want more information, what was in the packet, the internal, internal final rule, gives you even more detailed information.
Good.
Because I.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I did a little research on this, and I pulled up what I thought was interesting that maybe we could probably use was the investment in infrastructure, and that's dealing with the stormwater portions. And I went in and I pulled some stuff up off of the internet, and there's a lot of stuff out there talking about the different uses of it. And I would like to see us look into that, doing our stormwater infrastructure, whereas the water runs off of the streets into the different lakes. Is this something that it could be, and especially down there on, you know, you're drunk. You know, that's a, an area where the stormwater, there's pumps there, and the traffic is over forty-five, forty-five miles an hour in the residential area. And those cars, when they say forty-five, they usually go in sixty-five, and when it rains, I'm afraid that those cars are going to, what's called that hydro.
Hydro plane?
There you go, hit that thing and fly out and hit my house. All ready, all ready.
Okay, so, there's already a couple of things in our budget that would qualify for this. One of the things is the headworks, another thing was the improvements to Bell Street, there's potentially some other things. So, it would just be my recommendation that we look and see what is already going to improve in our budget. Take care of those things first, chances are, we're probably going to have half that money left over or more. And then we decide how to buy that money up from there. Just reason being is that anything that we're already set to spend out of our infrastructure general fund, we can always spend next year.
Yes.
So, let's maximize this grant first, suck as much of that out of the grants we can, and then we can use our own funds later.
Something we have until twenty twenty-two, twenty-four.
Yeah.
And we got another jump coming, right?
And as you know, whenever you design a project and activate it, it takes a while.
I agree.
But those are some things that obviously we don't have to really figure about or, or think about, because they've already been approved. So, if you, if you were to knock out a good jumper. Any other comments on it, questions? As Melody said, there's, it's kind of wide-ranging, so please do some research on it, think about it, talk to your community, and kind of look at some projects so we can maximize this relatively quickly. Don't want to wait around too long, it takes a long time to get engineering back and quotes and et cetera, et cetera. Anything else from staff on that? Any questions from the audience? This man, you have to come to the podium. Please give your name and address for the record. In the microphone.
Arisoli government, anyone east Wolf Street, I just wanted verification on the.
Yes, ma'am.
So, there's four different areas, that's not being decided today, which, you're not picking which ones you put the million on.
Right, there's several million, we only discussed a few products that have already been approved in our budget that we discussed, but everything else is still open for discussion.
Will be discussed at the later day, or?
Yes, everything, each individual project would have to be approved by council, so it'll probably be coming up every few months over the next several years, I would imagine.
So, for clarification, is infrastructure is going to be the priority?
From what we've discussed, there's some infrastructure projects that are definitely going to be a priority, but over half the money is still up for grabs.
So, do you have anything in mind, or would you like to share with us?
Not yet, it was just interesting how it was, the way that Ms. Melody described it, and it was then specified which one you're going on first. So, I just wanted verification.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions on that topic? Seeing none, move on to attorney updates, out of number twelve, ordinance fifteen dash twenty-one.
So, this is the draft ordinance for micromobility, if we consider for first meeting tonight. If I pose the title, short title for that, it's long.
Go ahead.
An ordinance of the city of Bayonne Park, Florida, providing recitals after the council intent, commending the city code. Section, obviously, Article Three, micromobility to Chapter Eighty-Six, Streets, sidewalks, and other places. Providing for definition, application for approval of micromobility program and operating agreement to operate such program. Provide for micromobility requirements and regulation, provide for implementation and charts, provide for. These provide for storage in case of emergency suspension and the revocation of operating approvals. Provide for content, provide for publication, and appeal of the codes, ordinances, and resolutions. Provide for sound volume, provide for effective day. So, this is some, as we discussed last couple of meetings, so, made a request by a local handler, bird, lantern scooters to put in the city, these scooters, and that's a, see, we have done that already. The fact of the matter, which they did it, we adopted that, what I propose is a combination of city of Tampa and city of Fort Lauderdale. That's some divisions that were obviously big cities, which is what we can agree to, and for a small city of Park. Well, a lot of it was very good stuff, and so, I put that in. Well, a lot of it was very good stuff and, and so I put that in. And then, um, passes by the people of Bird, their main office, um, of the corporation, not local, but, uh, and, um, they, you know, Tom, with it after we made a couple of changes, they suggested, which I thought were reasonable. Uh, and so.
And he's on Zoom.
Okay, that's good. Um, so, uh, he's on, early on Zoom, and, uh, so this is as far as I'm concerned, uh, you know, first read, two, three.
Okay.
Well, I've read all the ordinance, Jerry, if you wrote it up here, I think you did a great job with the city of Avon Park.
We do have one sign up on this agenda. Mr. Tom Macklin.
Well, while he's coming out, I'll just simply, uh, comment, this is kind of, this is a new regulation for us, a renewed throughout the state. So, uh, we're, we're gonna probably have to tweak it, we're gonna do it less strict or more strict. As time goes on, we, we bear to the citizens as well, so the purveyors.
Mr. Matt. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Tom Macklin, six zero nine, County Road sixty four east, here in Avon Park. Um, while I haven't had an opportunity to read the draft, I have concerns just in concept, uh, with doing something for micro mobility. If I read the board of statutes correctly, micro mobility is as it relates to anything where people make reservations and therefore hire and so on and so forth. But that it doesn't have anything to do with regulating the use of those who are items that are on private. I don't know how the draft is. Um, motorized scooters, and I don't know how your definitions are, but motorized scooters and for a statute aren't just the ones who stand up on by definition. There also can, they can be those with a saddle, something you sit on, that happens, may use three wheels, not just two. So on and so forth. So what I would like to see you do, if it's not a part of the thought process, is make sure that you adopt that other ordinance that will similarly restrict or permit devices similar to the ones that you're going to allow in this, uh, micro mobility ordinance for those units that are privately owned. Um, if you restrict one from sidewalks and not the others, it can cause confusions. People see one being used someplace. So I'd like for those things to be addressed on the front side. Uh, I thought it was, I thought it was interesting in researching this, well, we agreed with this afternoon, the city of Jacksonville Beach had had enough problems with that ordinance that they had adopted in the United East that they had up there that in December of two thousand twenty, they passed the moratorium on these things, so they could get the problems worked out. So they're not without issues. No one's pretending that they will be. But I hope that you have an ordinance that will similarly restrict or allow privately owned personal usage the same way that micro ability for hire or rent would do.
You know what, my, um, uh, Tom, I thought about that when they, when they, when it was presented to us and my brain is just calculated as saying, okay, so if the rentals will have a rule, the private and home will have the same rule. That's just the way my brain would, and that's why I didn't address it or bring it up. It just, it's my thought.
Well, and you hired, either we're both geniuses.
We are.
Indeed, but my, my concern would be that you tried to do that in the same ordinance. Because if you have someone in time decide that you need to tweak one and not the other. So I, I don't know, I'm not a attorney. Mr. Bureau would be better to, to speak for that.
They have to, we'll have a comment. Jerry?
Yeah, um, my feeling is at this point, let's not allow the privately owned ones until we know that we want this program at all. And how it takes some time for us to work with it, as I mentioned before, and we're gonna have to tweak this. And what it tweaks can be, you know, we code then, so you just apply by the code. It's, you know, it doesn't, you know, uh, at that time. By doing another ordinance, it could be, but, um, the thing here is with, with these, is if you're having this, um, these companies provide these on, on the side, they're putting up a lot of insurance. And, you know, I don't think that, that, um, the private person will be able to afford the, the level of insurance that we really inquire here. And I don't, I don't recommend lowering it based on what I've read as well. With regard to, you know, people laying into cars and cars laying into them and so on, or creating accidents because they fall in front of them. Um, so, no, that's just my feeling at this point. You can do as you wish, but I, my, my feeling is you should go ahead and pass this. We'll deal with the issue with regards of, uh, detail wise and, and contracts that we'll have. Um, and they're gonna be subject to modifications and ordinance and so on, which case they can pull out, they don't like it or whatever. We, I think we already give them a fair shot at doing this, so to, to perceive board as it is. I, I do agree that if you have life as wealth, you're also gonna have a problem with not knowing who uses who. And they will be well marked, that's included for us.
Well, and, and to your point, and, you know, I don't, I don't think I misread that. But I think the way Florida statutes address motorized scooters is that they're allowed, but you have to, by statute, unless you disallow or impose restrictions, because those could just be bought out on the street, you know, I mean, so I would, I would ask you to look at it closely. It's only the first draft. You do have law enforcement professionals here in the room this evening that may, may already have their finger on the pulse of this whole circumstance, but um, I know there's, you know, people that have these motorized skateboards and all kinds of different things out there that they zip up and down sidewalks on and they use them to get around them. Um, so I would just, as you move forward.
Okay, I agree. I mean, I think it's something we have to look at, you know, and, uh, and monitor. I, I would say that, you know, um, even with us doing this, there's not a whole lot of areas, you know, downtown, they're gonna be able to do it. Because we don't have anything to say about state roads and Main Street and, we said, they're both state roads, so.
Send your juror's name to the dispatch, so you can.
Well, I, I have to have, that has to be approved by, uh, the, the state.
You know something, uh, ironically, I just saw two young men this week riding down the middle street. Wasn't on, like, like, but, uh, they had these huge skateboards with like a big fat wide wheel. Motorized, they were just going down the middle of the street, you know, not very fast, it's got a small, like, serpent, I mean. But that's something, that's more of a police act, but I don't think they're legally allowed to be in the middle of the street. You're right, they, they are coming and the power is on the road.
Yeah, I, I've used them a number of times, as I mentioned before. Yeah, I think they're, they can be used in a safe manner. And they can be used in a wildly crazy manner too, so it's gonna, it takes some, some, some work.
Ever since COVID happened, people have gotten really creative with their extra. What happened to this?
That's true.
There's all manner of new vehicles out there.
Another thing, Mary, if I may, I, I spoke with Dan, who came before us with this idea. And I just recently went to buy, uh, Lexi, and we, and there was one of the motorized bird units there. And I, I asked him, I said, what about the, the children? Because there's an age limit and it's written on that motor scooter. And you can't be on that scooter, it has to be eighteen or over. But I see children riding. He said to me, well, parents, parents pay for it and the children can ride, they ride, the children do ride.
Yeah.
And I can see that as being a problem, so we really need to look at this, because I see kids and they're not eighteen. They may be thirteen, twelve.
Yeah, our ordinance was eighteen, and so the parent would have to unlock it themselves and, and put their own ID, so they would be responsible at that point.
For that child.
Or, or, so.
The, the, the fact that you would say somebody is willing to break the law is astounding.
There's what, there's breaking law, there's basically opening yourself up to huge liability. That liability associated with that, you know, if somebody were to, uh, unlock the, uh, the computer on one of these things and let, you know, a child use it, huge.
Yeah, but, I mean, none different than a parent buying alcohol for their underage child and.
As far as I know.
Okay. And we grew up in different areas. Anyway, uh, so do we have a motion? For the first reading of ordinance fifteen to twenty twenty one.
I'll make the motion, we'll go ahead through ordinance number fifteen to twenty twenty one.
We have a motion in a second. Any further questions? Dean, then we'll call a roll.
Member Gray.
Yes.
Member Johnson.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Next up, we have the draft concession agreement with kayaks, Nelson Park.
Okay, so, um, put this together based on, uh, where I, we, like, found, in the forehead, well, it's outside. And, um, it's been reviewed by the, uh, concessionaire, concessionaire. He has some, I've made some changes that he, he asked for and, uh, reasonable changes. There are other things that I, I, I told him I couldn't make those changes, uh, so, the line, so he can tell you what those problems are that he has with it. Uh, I just did, I feel it was appropriate that he didn't make those decisions, I would say.
You on with us now?
Yes, I am. Thank you. This is Adam Greenstein, CEO of Rent Up Fund. Can you, can you guys hear me?
Yes, I can. Could you go over those, uh, changes that you're looking for?
Yes, thank you. Um, so, the, the first one is, uh, pretty straightforward, just on the term. Um, I, I understand that, uh, basically, um, the city wants to pursue a, basically a a term of, of no longer than twelve months. Um, and, and then after that, if there's interest, uh, you know, you can go out to RFP for a longer term agreement. That, that's fine, um, to do a shorter term for twelve months. Our, our objective is really just to ensure that we have twelve months of operation time. So if we were to execute the agreement today, and then let's say, you know, implement, begin the implementation process and implement in two months, that would only give us ten months of operations. So we would just want it to be basically to commence at the signature, the insurance and all the indemnification obligations kick in as soon as the agreement commences. Uh, but then the term would basically extend to twelve months after the program launches. So if we end up launching on, you know, December first of this year, it would end December first or, you know, November thirty.
I'm, I'm fine with that, so long as, um, the, the, the insurance and indemnification is in place before they occupy. As soon as they occupy the property, that is definitely a place in order to protect you from my folks.
Do you have any issues with, uh, having the insurance in place before you occupy?
N- not at all.
Any other questions from the council? Are there any objections to that? All right, what do you have next, sir?
Okay, um, the next is just of the security deposit. Uh, they, I, I'd imagine that the, the rationale for this is to make sure that there's some money in the bank for when we have to, you know, pay out the, uh, revenue share on this. Uh, and, uh, basically just as in, this, the way that our collection works, our payment processing, um, is that any amounts that are owed to the city via the revenue share agreement are actually held in an entirely separate account. Um, so we, we would suggest that basically that type of deposit is not necessary. And as a small, growing organization, you know, we, we can't have our money tied up, um, in these types of, of deposits. When we.
Turn to, uh, section six, bottom page two. Five thousand dollar deposit.
Where did the, uh, the number five thousand come from? The, the step story or?
Um, it's some dark place.
Is there, uh?
So we keep it as, as, though he, as, uh, gentleman described, as putting, um, make revenue to a separate account, you just maintain that versus the payed deposit.
You're, you're speaking to me instead of the microphone.
We can't hear you. Oh, really? I said, is there any reason, um, other than, um, any reason for us not, um, allowing the five thousand dollar deposit? And doing as he suggested, that any revenue sharing, we put into a separate account?
I, I'm not. Yeah, it's not a legal question related to security associated with, uh, payment. Um, it's, you know, how much you willing to trust and how much you willing to go out and live out here, you know, thousands and thousands of dollars on this anyway, so I would certainly, you know, would say that it's very, very loose. Going to deposit, but if you wish to do what he wishes to do, then, uh, that, I, I, you know, I'm not opposed to that. That's free to decide.
Mr. Greenstein, would you be opposed to a thousand dollar deposit?
I mean, we would, just to kind of i- in principle here, we haven't made any deposits in any other, for any other companies here. Our deposit is essentially, we've invested in thousands of dollars of equipment that's slated for Avon Park and not a shipping container right now.
Perhaps you could provide a, a worth of what you're investing, that may be good for the council to know.
Oh, uh, the total, the total worth of, of, of the equipment that we're investing?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's in the, you know, fifteen to twenty thousand dollars range, you know, before we even start talking about shipping, uh, shipping costs, which are crazy right now, and insurance costs, et cetera, so.
I mean, no deposit, you, you, uh, provide the equipment, the security, the payment. Whereas we, we don't touch it.
Right.
And we don't, we don't touch it, you don't pay us, unless you don't, unless you don't pay us, but then we take it out and put it in value as that. That would be.
Yep, yeah, yeah, I, I, I think that's, I think that's fair.
Okay, I agree with that. Anyone else?
Yes.
You have a deal, sir? Well, Steve.
Excellent. Um, so the next here is the section nine, A three. Um, so the reporting. We, we can provide a, uh, gross sales report. We, at, of course, as we know, any reporting that we provide, our municipal partners, you know, becomes public record. Um, and our economics are basically, you know, what we think is our, our secret sauce and, and our technology. And if we had to basically hand our annual profit and loss to, you know, a city, and that becomes public record, that would greatly impact our, our competitive positioning in this industry and give all of our competitors insights on our, our cost model. Uh, for us, that's just not a, a risk we could, we could ever take, given that this is an early nation industry and we are the first movers. Um, a- a- and so, um, we would, we, we just can't agree to provide annual profit and loss.
For the payments to the city, uh, obviously, you're gonna have to provide some sort of a benchmark. So what do you propose?
No, so we are happy to provide the sales reports. Well, we'll, we'll report on every cent that is received through this program and then you get and all the ridership, et cetera, and you get a percentage of that revenue. It's just basically reporting on our cost model, I don't think is, is necessary for the city to receive their revenue share in any sense, um, and, and just really impacts our, our business.
So Jerry, would it be necessary to have the profit and loss portion there?
No, I don't think so. I think with a small, you know, um, deal that we're doing with them, I think it's probably, okay. Um, I wouldn't point out, though, uh, this thing that the, you know, um, you know, the city, uh, the state has a, uh, exception to, uh, public records based on trade secrets, if it qualifies a trade secret, but I, I'm fine with what, what you suggested, but you're fine with that. Because like I said, I don't think we're really making, you know, tens of thousands of dollars off. tens of thousands of dollars off this.
More or less a proof of concept at this point.
And then, you know, I think just wing it over time, it turns out that, you know, it's, uh, more lucrative, or it goes on more late, and, you know, becomes a big issue, then, then, I think it's up to revisit.
Anyone on council opposed to?
No.
Sales. All right.
If you wanna go ahead and stab, think of stab, make the change, if you wanna see that, shoot to me, uh, I, I'll let you change that one.
Okay, perfect.
Do you have, Mr. Greenstein?
That's all.
Well, that was easy enough, so if you will be so kind as to make those changes, send, send it over to, uh, Mr. Beer there, then, uh, we can take this up at our next meeting, or like, can you get it done quickly?
Well, if you're okay with those changes, you could actually approve some of the, my, my, the changes, uh, as opposed to.
Does anyone wanna make that motion?
Yes, I want. I move that we approve, um, item number F thirteen, um, the concession agreement with kayaks at Dawson Park. Uh, extended by F thirteen, the changes that were stated by the, um, gentleman and the captain.
Pending attorney.
Pending attorney, yours, um.
We have a motion in a second, is there questions? Tom Macklin, six zero nine, County Road sixty four east, Avon Park, this is a non-exclusive keeps agreement?
This is an exclusive thing.
So no one else would have the opportunity to do that?
No, that's why it's only for a year, it's to test, test it out, and, uh, at, in the year with rough, our efficiency, if anybody else is interested at that point, but we just wanna see if it's gonna work, and how it's gonna work, and so it's a test module.
Thank you, at that one particular part, in that one particular spot. All right, we have a motion in a second, is there any further questions? If you have none, we'll call a roll. Member Gray?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number fourteen, city manager updates.
Okay, first one, the, uh, now we've received no proposals on it, and, um, last week, actually, I spoke to, um, Roberto, who owns the studio next door to it, West Side. Uh, he got a hold of me because he's got some termites, he got a pest control company in there, and, um, they said there's both dry wood and subterranean, they need a tenant, but if they tend it, they have to tend the brick building. And, I don't know if you remember, but last year, we got the company out to look for the brick building, and they said, um, there was both types in there then, and we would have to tend that, and at that point, um, to do the subterranean, which is a cheaper one, but tending together was almost twenty-four thousand dollars. All the buildings attached to it would also have to be, um, people would have to get out for three days and shut down the road for a few hours. So I just wanna bring that up to you, that the city, that night, obviously, that we got inside, the council got inside, working on doing for. Okay? Thanks for the good news. Um, the other one I got on there, the, uh, reapply CBG general charter grants, I covered that, I put it on here prior, just to make sure it's on it, but I covered that. Um, at our last, um, special meeting in reference to, that, um, we put into wastewater and stormwater. Um, the stormwater was over two million, and that's what we'd have to look into, that Brandon brought up about maybe using this American Rescue money, we may not be able to use it for, for, granted, the corvid question, but that's, we've got time anyway to do that. So, we did, um, find out, though, around Thursday or Friday, we did get the, uh, F D, Small County Outreach Program Municipal Grant FY, um, twenty twenty-three for resurfacing Fred Connor Road from West Carolina Avenue, Memorial Avenue, um, for sixty-nine thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars. We've got a grant for that, but it'll be in the next fiscal year, awesome. We, uh, our packs, Park Sutherland is turning out on there, if you may know somebody that you might wanna fill that with. Is he opposed to reupping? Um, he's done his two years, I don't know if they do more than two or not, Mayor, that, from the email I got, it didn't sound like it. But Danielle's on there for another year, so, you know, I wanna think of, uh, who you might want to get.
Okay, just throwing it out there, uh, if, if he can't serve, I mean, if, if he's willing to serve, and he can serve, then bother me and do it again. Um, but if he can't, then I would be willing to do it.
Okay, um, the City Hall window bid closed last Friday, we had one bid, I still haven't had a chance to sit down and read it, make sure we got everything, but one bid for, uh, from Florida Glass Mirror for seventy-nine thousand nine hundred sixty dollars. All day windows? It's the second story, win, second story, there's twenty-two windows. Like I said, I'll look at the, look at it, probably run it by Jerry too, and then I'll bring it back, yeah, and the next, um, meeting, because we don't get something soon, when is it gonna fall out on our house?
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
That concludes our agenda, is there anything else to do with the city? Mr. Davis? Give your name, address, and microphone, man.
All days, go forth to the South Carolina Avenue, we work for.
Yes, sir.
I'm here today to present an application for Martin's name. Next year. I got some young people taking over the COVID. And I got a little too old.
Don't say it, Arm, don't say it.
I feel it every morning, but, uh, uh, and the, and and these young people wanted to get to work now, so they get in the app, they, uh, I'm sorry, they didn't give me a package for everyone, but I, I got this for the city manager.
Yes.
So that he can look through it, and it's an app, it's a, uh, application enough for a grant. And, uh, they had access, uh, I was, I was hoping they could give a little more, but they, they put two thousand, twenty-eight hundred.
Twenty-eight, not twenty-eight, the one, the candidate.
Yeah, uh.
It's, uh, that's about spending the year.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the.
So like I said, they're handing off to the, uh, city manager, they'll look through it for completeness, now when they can ask you any questions, if there's anything missing, then we'll pick it up at our next. Earliest convenience.
Okay, and I got, you know, one of your things, uh, Theo, night great.
So you have her contact info on there as well?
Yes, it's all.
Awesome, perfect. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Anything else to do with the city?
Oh, yeah, just one quick one, September twentieth, we're gonna have a city clerk, we have the job too.
Awesome.
Young lady works at Sunna Lake, she's the board secretary, which is basically the clerk. Got her two-year degree in, um, legal, legal, a paralegal.
She's been in there quite a while.
She's been there over six years, David and I did an interview, lasted two hours. I got ahold of, uh, Tandy Candy, who I know, who was the boss of ten years, and she said, if you don't hire, she, she's been looking to hire young counts, so.
I don't know personally, but I've heard good things about her, true. Christian Park, Christian Parkman. Christian Parkman. Okay, anything else to do with the city? So you have none, attempt a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seeing opposition, we're in here.